...a fence that exceeds the variant, that exceeds the, there's no code in current pipe. And the other is for a shed and the concern is its placement.
Yes.
Do you want to come up to the table?
Sure.
Clarification, Carl. One place says eight feet and the other place says six feet, which is Stacy, eight feet. Six, eight feet.
Eight feet.
That, in the minutes, has never been passed?
Entertainer motion to open the hearing?
Oh, it's not a hearing, it's just a... Wait. In the minutes that I got in email, I thought you guys made that decision last time.
Or is that a 10 car, 10 car runway?
Oh, my neighbor. Yeah, my neighbor might be thinking of...
It's a different applicant.
Yes, it's a different applicant.
Same street. Therefore, house is down.
Yeah.
There is a clarification. The drawing shows both six feet, six feet on one side and eight feet on the other.
Right.
Now, why she's requesting an eight feet?
Well, my understanding is that for the six-foot fence, I just need a permit because that's in keeping with the code. But for the eight-feet portion, I need a variance.
That's right.
Okay. And the reason is because where the eight-foot section will go, the land is much lower than where the six-foot will go, so that will keep them at the same height.
First, we need to open the hearing.
Oh, okay. It's not a hearing. It's not a hearing. It's not a hearing. No, Katie's saying it's just a meeting, not a hearing.
We can act on this, can't we?
Oh, shit. A general. You could certainly have. You could certainly make a decision pending.
We've received an application.
I'm at the, pardon me, I'm not usually the clerk at the meeting.
That's okay, don't mind me. I've never been in one of these meetings, so I don't know what.
Katie, can I have your copy for two seconds? You sure you have the most complete packet for this?
You bet I do. I do it all online.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should have one almost as thick as mine.
It's in the file.
I have the emails, too, if you want to look at those.
I'm just looking for these. Well, if the board would like to go ahead and take more information, I will come out there and find out the status of the public hearing.
Are you concerned that it hasn't been advertised?
That's exactly what I'm concerned about, whether or not it was public, whether or not it was advertised.
If the public meeting has been advertised...
I'm going to do a some here, boys.
I will, let me call the deputy clerk, just to make sure. It's highly likely it's all just fine, but before I let anybody make a bad decision and get anybody in trouble.
What is the routine? Do we always set up a public hearing as soon as we get an application? I think that we have a meeting about this first, and then, if we need a public hearing, we set one up. There shouldn't have been one, so this is the first time we're discussing this.
If we don't approve it, then there's no need for a public hearing, is there?
No.
So, to have a public hearing before we even have a chance to discuss it and make a determination?
Yeah.
Oh, what's your last name?
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, that's what we do. That's the order. We have a public hearing.
Yeah, this is...
Right, but don't we discuss it?
No, we have a meeting first, before we have a public hearing.
This is the meeting.
Right.
We will have a public hearing. And based upon that, we will then have an opportunity both to hear from the applicant and to hear from members of the board who may have questions or concerns.
Yeah, this is a meeting, not a hearing.
Then we close the meeting and we vote.
Well, let's see how far we get. Penny?
According to Albert, it's a properly noticed meeting, but not a public hearing because the board did not vote to have a public hearing.
Right.
I'm so sorry, but I just didn't want to cause the board any faults.
Thank you.
A hundred percent.
Thanks for checking.
So, we can proceed?
Yes.
But not with a hearing?
Not with a hearing. This is a meeting only.
That's what she just said, Carl.
Okay, okay. Well...
Okay, so how, I'm sorry I was late. I had to break into my car. It was frozen solid. I miss my garage so much. I have a concern that we don't have a recommendation from the building inspector on the fence.
We do have a statement from the building inspector regarding the placement of the shed.
We do have that, but we do not have, I mean, there's not a whole lot about the fence.
Inasmuch as we can't act on this tonight, you can get a permit.
Okay, so let's...
Would you tell us why you need the eight-foot fence?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand this.
That's the shed.
That's the shed.
That's for the shed.
No, is this the house?
I don't know what that is. I've never seen that before.
That's the house.
Um, yes.
And where's the shed?
All right, we talking about the shed, or do you want to do the shed first or the fence?
I just want to locate where I am here.
I think my contractor must have done this. Okay, so this is Henry Dubois or DuBois. This is Caroline Way. This is where the front door of my house is. This is where my portico is. Not sure what that is, but in any event, the fence is, sorry, the shed is right here.
But, okay, the shed is right there, so it's not in the, not going into the front yard?
Yes, it is.
It is in the front yard.
Okay, let me, if I can, maybe I can give a little history?
What does she say?
So, I am the only house on the road that doesn't have a garage. I have two little boys, they have bicycles and, you know, outdoor things, and rather than having everything strewn all over the yard, I wanted to have a storage shed. So, I looked online and I looked at the New York, I don't know what they were, regulations that said, and first thing I saw was that you don't need a permit for a storage structure that's less than 144 square feet, but then you have to determine if you need a variance. I initially did not believe I needed a variance either because I just bought this house in December. The people that lived there before apparently successfully applied for a permit for a deck. They wound up moving before they had a chance to build the deck, but the building, was it the building inspector at that time, determined that Henry DuBois Road was the side yard and Caroline Way was the front yard because the house faces that way. So, I went ahead and I had my contractor build the shed. I brought pictures of it, three pictures. So, that's what it looks like. It was built to match the house. The siding and the trim and the green metal roof all matched the house.
So, it's already been installed?
It's already been installed because I didn't know I needed a permit or a variance for those reasons. Then, the current building inspector determined that the prior building inspector was wrong and that Henry DuBois Road is my front yard, not my side yard because it's longer...
Yes.
Than the, so, in any event, yes, it's, had already at that point been constructed. This is a view from the road, so you can see what you can see over the fence, which is just about nothing.
This is a view from Henry DuBois Road. When I went out, I was ver, I was, I guess confused because I didn't realize that this referred to an already existing.
Right.
So, I was thinking that there was this and then you wanted to build something else.
Oh, no.
That's my question, too.
No.
But I was concerned about the view from Caroline Way. But I also have a question. I believe Caroline Way is a private road.
Yes, it is.
How did, is that, does that have an effect on either what would be a front yard or...
If the building inspector determined that X was the front, that's, we'll go with that.
That's what we go with, yeah.
This is the...
So, this is wrong.
No, no, this is correct. This is DuBois.
Right.
This is the front yard and...
No, this is wrong. That should say front and that should say side.
That's correct. And in fact, within our code, 217, 212-17, let me find where it actually states this, but when it's talking about the setbacks, it says that even if a side yard is on a main road, then it should adhere to the front yard setbacks.
That's in 19.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, but...
19, yes.
I'm sorry, are you, you were looking at this and you and I both agreed on what was the front and what was the side? So, are you saying that you're agreeing that Caroline Way is the front?
No, I am agreeing that Henry DuBois is the front because we have had several decisions come before us where building inspectors have said that Henry DuBois is the front. I mean, it's the squirliest subdivision.
That's what the current building inspector told me, and he said that the last building inspector who granted the permit, I guess, for the previous owners was wrong when he decided the opposite.
So, I'm sorry, I just need to stay with you here.
Sure.
So, it used to be that Caroline Way was considered the front.
Yes.
Now, Henry W. is the front.
Apparently, yes.
Okay, which would mean that the setback information would apply to the shed vis-à-vis it being in the front yard.
Yes, it would.
Okay, let me ask a question, though. This whole thing is fence.
Yes.
So, how does that mean...
Doesn't have an impact, I don't think. I don't think it has an impact. And it seems to me that, you know, regardless, there should be a 25-foot setback because the code says that when you have a side yard that is on a street, then you adhere to the front yard setbacks.
But there was also something about the distance from the house that I was confused about, and I was really confused since I didn't realize I was looking at the existing shed.
So, the existing shed is right up against the fence. Is that right?
Yeah.
So, this dark square here means nothing to us?
I don't think so. I don't know who drew that square.
Okay, so that's the, so it's completely out of compliance every which way we look at it?
Yes.
Well, why would we want to approve it? What will happen if we don't approve it?
They move the shed.
Okay, then.
Well, the building inspector came to the house with my contractor after the fact and both of them determined it's a .24 acre piece of property, and there is something about the distance that it has to be from the house, and I don't recall what it is. But he concluded that there is no other spot on the property for the shed. That would, Richard...
Rich Travis.
Yes.
So, we need him to tell us that in writing?
He did.
He did?
All right, let's see.
That? I didn't pick that up.
Clarification.
Oh, yeah, he did.
No accessory building shall be located closer to the street than the street wall of the principal building. Yeah, and when a lot abuts more than one street, the front yard of such a lot shall be established on the wider of the abutting streets. I have made the determination that the yard abutting H.W. DuBois. I've asked if the ZBA also determine or stipulate what setback would be required?
Yes.
Since there is no setback for an accessory structure in a front yard?
Okay, so he's saying that's...
The side and rear setbacks of 12 feet listed in section 20, or 212-20A3 would apply for this structure, since the side of structures under 12 feet.
So, he's asking us to determine what setback should have been done.
But wait, it says no accessory building shall be located closer to the street than the street wall of the principal building.
Of the primary residence.
Of the primary, yeah.
What?
Of the primary residence, of the house.
Right. So, if it were moved back farther, then it would be, I mean, if...
Nice as well.
Excuse me.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, if you were able to move it back like this, you would be in compliance with the setback requirements and the not being in front of the house requirement. How hard is it to move?
I'd imagine it needs to all be taken apart and put back together, but where are you suggesting it be moved?
I'm thinking that if you, this, I mean, part of the problem is this and this look very different to me.
Yes. I don't recognize that drawing at all, and I honestly, I don't know where that came from.
Unless this is an old drawing.
It is. It's from the prior owner, so now there's the patio.
Is it the current drawing?
Well, there, I mean...
This is my drawing.
But this is the covered, this is the covered area, though, because that...
That's a portico.
Right, okay, because that doesn't really show here.
Which is the portico, this?
What is a portico? What do you think it is?
It's just, it's a covered, it's just a, like a ceiling with two beams coming down. It's open on all sides. It's just like a, it's just a covering on the top.
Is that your main interest? Is that for parking a car so it doesn't snow down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it's a carport.
The main entrance, I think, is...
A carport.
So, is that this?
No, it's this.
This is the carport?
Yeah. The problem is it can't be moved where you're suggesting because those are old drawings. I believe Rich Travis put those in here because that was a drawing from when the prior owner saw the deck. And now, there's a patio on the back, and there, there's five feet between the edge of the patio and my property line. So, the fence is actually going to come only three feet away from the patio. He did send me something in writing telling me there was no other place. It was in an email that I guess I should have printed out and brought. I thought it would be put in the file.
Could it not be put, if this is no longer the front, could it not be put here?
I think we need better information to make the decision. I'm really sorry, but, you know, we've got drawings here that we can't really understand. And, I mean, I think the whole thing at Caroline Way, you know, you started out with variances being given that have created just a very difficult situation. And I worry about setting precedent if we do it for you. We have to be prepared to do it for everyone else. So, we're not trying to be mean, but...
Unless, wait, unless there's a demonstrable reason why this is a peculiar situation, which is why it's called a variance.
Right, and so, obviously, one of the conditions we want to explore here is this a self-created hardship?
What does that mean?
Well, there are five criteria for granting a variance that we have to consider. We have to consider whether this will create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or nearby properties. So, we need to know how this is going to impact everyone there. Can the benefit sought be achieved by some other method, which is why we're asking, could this be moved in some way so that we don't have to give a variance?
Makes sense.
Is the request substantial? And I can't even figure that out because I don't know what's really on here. These two different drawings are so different from each other that I can't figure that out. Will the variance have an adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? And is this a self-created hardship? So, those are the things that we are supposed to consider.
May I also just add on to that, too, that one of the reasons why we have a whole list of criteria is because once a variance is granted, it is then given to the house, the property, and not to the property owners. So, if you were to move, the variance stays with the house. So, we're thinking in long-term.
Right. Can I address some of those things now?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure I'm going to remember them all, but one of them was something about there being a unique situation. There's one, two, three, there's five homes on Caroline Way. I'm the only home that doesn't have a garage, so that sets me apart a little from everybody else because there's nowhere else besides just out in the open for me to put all my kids' toys, bicycles, and whatnot. As far as the aesthetics of it, number one, the entire property is going to be fenced in ultimately, and I also purposely had it constructed so that it would be aesthetically pleasing. It matches the house exactly, and certainly more aesthetically pleasing than having stuff strewn all over the property. I don't remember what the other thing was.
All right, so, all right, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or nearby properties?
Can't imagine what that would be. I don't know what the undesirable change would be.
I would point out that we're talking about an area of variance and that the criteria are recommended for our consideration.
Yes.
The applicant does not have to meet every one.
No, you don't have to, but I'm just going through because you asked me what it was. This is what we need to think about. So, can the benefit sought be achieved from some other method? So, as I'm understanding, I'm very sympathetic with the fact that you want to have a shed where your children can store things outside.
Well, and lawn mowers and things of that nature.
No, no, I mean, that's not disputed. But the question is, could this be positioned in such a way that we did not have to give such a substantial variance? Because one of the things we want to look at is how substantial it is.
Okay.
And since you weren't even aware of this when you did this, it wasn't in anybody's thinking, you know, if we have this 12-foot by 12-foot, or not quite 12-foot by 12-foot shed, where should we position it so that we have to ask for as little a variance as possible?
Understood.
And that's, I think, something that would be interesting to explore.
Well, Richard Travis, as I said, did come out to the house and walk the entire property such it is, as it is with the contractor, and determined that there was nowhere else on the property to put...
And you're not even wearing hearing aids. We do seem to attract that.
Richard Travis did come and walk the property, and definitely in an email to me, he indicated that there was no other possible location for the shed on my property.
Did he say why?
Because the property is very small and there isn't anywhere else that the shed would fit, that it would be in compliance, I guess, unless you stuck it, you know, right in the, right outside my front door.
So, on that note, let me just ask a question.
And I would disregard that because honestly, when I look at that, I don't even recognize that to be my house or my property. I have no idea where that drawing came from. It didn't come from me.
But this, there is a carport.
A carport, yeah.
Is that the carport?
Yes.
She was pointing to.
Yeah, if you look at my other drawing...
Which is near the shed. The carport is near the shed.
Yes, if you look at my drawing, you can just draw the carport on there, and then it makes sense because like this here, I don't know, I don't even know what that is.
Is that the patio?
I think maybe, no, maybe that was their proposed deck where they wanted to put their deck, the prior owner.
Okay.
But if you look at my drawing, if you just went boot like that, little rectangle, that's the carport.
Kind of like this.
The driveway's here, you pull in the driveway?
And the shed is here.
The shed is right here, over here.
Oh, but this is, makes it look like it's in the corner.
If this is the end of the fence, the red fence that you see in the pictures, you can see, see how the fence goes way past the shed? So, it doesn't come all the way to the corner, but it is right there.
You're right, this is terrible.
Yeah, so this is where the shed is, and there's a little portico right there.
Okay, so this is the carport?
Yep, carport, sorry, I keep saying portico.
And is there distance between the fence and the shed?
Yes.
Couple of feet?
Yes, so that you can walk behind it if you needed to paint it or do something. Yep, that's just about exactly right.
Okay, so, you bought the house last December?
Yes.
And when did this occur, that the shed was installed?
Two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
And, three weeks ago?
I think so.
And when did you find out it was a problem?
After it was built, the last day, when my contractor was there cleaning up materials. I think it was that day, no, maybe it was the day before that, I got an email from Rich Stephens, who is one of my neighbors, who told me, he asked me whether I had gotten a permit for it, and I said no, that I looked up state law, no permit was required. He's the one that told me that that was a no-no, and so, I had my contractor come here to downstairs to the building department, and he had Rich Travis come with him to my house.
Okay, and who was your contractor?
Yeah. Ed Kramer.
Is he a new-fought guy?
I think he lives in...
My contention is that all contractors know they need building permits.
He should have known.
He absolutely knows.
He's not a, I'm saying contractor, it's not what he does for a living, it's like a side hobby. He builds sheds, so I don't know.
Yeah, we have a lot of this business around about contractors who do things that they know they shouldn't do, or it seems that way to me, because that is their business and they know there are municipal regulations in regard to all of this. So, I think he did a bad thing to you.
So, I have two questions, which may not be relevant, maybe not...
Go ahead.
Thank you. Would, I'm just using this because, if we had to grant a variance...
Yes, yes.
If we had to, ladies, if we had to...
You're already with me, I know.
If we had to grant a variance, would it be easier to grant a variance in this back corner, for example, or at the back of the carport, for example? Instead of, I will say that from Caroline Way, this is, the shed is very visible. Now, I'm not clear about whether that's relevant or not.
Well, I think that is an aesthetic condition of the neighborhood. And, I mean, I'm also bothered by the whole precedent issue. You know, where do we stop, you know? Is it easier to ask for forgiveness than permission? I don't like being put in this position. I don't want to be mean, but, you know, who's building your fence, by the way? It's not the same guy.
No, it's not.
You know, he should have known, and it's sort of like, I feel uncomfortable about this.
Well, part of the discomfort is that this is an after-the-fact thing.
Yeah.
It certainly makes it more uncomfortable.
It certainly does, and I think the way we get more after-the-fact cases is to grant variances retroactively.
Is to grant?
Variances retroactively to something that was done wrong.
Yeah, to give forgiveness rather than permission. It trivializes the existence of the ZBA, and we have a certain re-sensibility.
But I do have a concern that the applicant, that on the whole, having a shed, from a community standpoint, on the whole, having a shed is better than not having a shed.
Good point.
Right, which is not to say that I'm comfortable with, I'm, it's uncomfortable than what I put, there was yet another shed, but I'm not comfortable with this shed being where it is. I wish that we had the right to say to the guy who constructed it, you should have known better and you need to take on the cost of moving it because...
Yeah, well, I think that's what you should say.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. There is nowhere for it to be moved to. The two locations that you've suggested, the adjacent or the corner of their property directly across, there is, I don't really see from the pictures, but you can see that this is the patio on the back, and there is literally like three feet of my patio.
So, this isn't to scale?
No.
Okay.
There's not enough room there. In the other location you suggested, that's where the outdoor air, big air conditioning unit things are, and also, there's a whole bunch of trees around there, and all the trees would have to be taken down. would have to be taken down. So, that's part of the reason why Rich Travis said there was nowhere else to put it.
And you didn't say that to us, though, did you?
He did not say it to us, he said that we should come up with some...
What about that here in this corner?
I'm sure he would say it to you if you asked him and I could print out what he sent me and give it to you if you'd like.
What about in this corner? You know, in this...
That's where it is now.
Well, it's further forward than that.
Um, not by much, not by much, it's pretty close to the corner. This, you can see where it is there? That's really just about the corner, the fence ends just about there and then it comes, it's going to come across the back of my property, but the fence is going to be three feet from my patio, that's all the room that I have. If, because the fence needs to be two feet from the property line, as I understand it, and there's five feet total, so if the fence is two feet from my property line, it's three feet from the edge of my, my patio.
You may need to make a decision about what you want to do with your square footage.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want a fence? Do you want a shed? You may not be able to fit both.
It's news to me that in the village, fences have to be put two feet from the property line.
I have never heard that either.
No.
I just heard that on the street.
No.
Can they be put right on your property line?
You have to, you really have to go and get a permit from, and get advice from the building inspector.
How deep is the shed? Do you...
It's, that he did write, somebody wrote that on that drawing, I think. Twenty-five by fourteen, fourteen feet deep.
It's a big log-in shed.
Yes, it is. Well, I'm gathering Google Maps is not accurate, because it looks like you've got plenty of land there.
It, it isn't, it's, it's not a big piece of property.
Yeah, it's...
Which one is mine?
Here, this is two, oh, there, jumped. This is to Caroline Way. And you have, you know, I mean, it looks like you've got, it's jumping, I'm sorry.
Doesn't look like that in person.
So, here, there's no, this is just the property line, there's no fence here.
No, there's not, but I want to put a fence there.
You want to put a fence here?
That's the eighth of century.
Yes, they, my neighbors already have a fence, we're on there, yeah. But it's, it's a, it's a metal fence.
Yeah, it wasn't obtrusive, I didn't, I mean, I didn't, I wasn't looking, saying, oh, my God, look at that fence.
No, it's a metal fence.
So, do you happen to know how much space there is from here to here?
Not off the top of my head, no.
One question I have, I don't have an answer to, and that's why, it might be going that the wrong way, or, so please let, let me know if it's not a good question, but this also has to do very much with a detached accessory building, the garage, it's detached from the house. Are there options to get storage attached to your house? Like if you were to attach it to the portico or other areas? Would that be different?
That's why I was asking about the, like, the back of the furniture.
Yeah, and I don't know, I'll flap my head, what that would entail, but if you're looking, if you're looking for storage, maybe another option isn't looking for detached sheds, but looking for, creating storage on, on your property, on your house.
I think first of all, you really need a plan that is accurate.
Okay.
That, yes, you really need to find a way to give us the information that is absolutely accurate for what exists now and represents the size and tells us what's the house, what's the, the patio and so forth, and tells us the setbacks that exist.
Would, okay.
Because we are in the dark on this completely. And the fence is a separate issue from the placement of this.
Yes.
Except, if the nice thing is that it doesn't have to be in two feet.
I think you need to go back to the building department and ask for some advi, this is my personal feeling, jump in, please, go back and ask for some advice and figure out a way to create a plan that is completely accurate and verifiable by the, by the building inspector and get the correct information about where the fence has to be placed, because these, these are both no good for our purposes.
What if I, even if I'm not required to put the fence two feet in from my property, I, what if I just want to put it in two feet from the property, which is how I drew it on there?
I, I will tell you that down the road, whoever owns this can claim to own that.
Can claim to own what?
That, that two feet.
Right, that's why I'm, oh...
Because it's been abandoned, isn't it?
You might be taking two feet away from yourself if you do that.
Okay, well, let's suppose I didn't care about that. I mean, I understand that, what you're saying.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to see if we could at least resolve the fence issue, because I did speak to Rich, I did get advice from the building department, that's how I came to know that for the six-foot portion of fence, I just need a permit, but for the eight-foot portion, I need the variance because it's really only allowed to be six feet.
And he didn't tell you that it had to be on the property line?
That it had to be?
No, that it could be on.
No.
Let me just show you one thing.
So, you, so you want to move it in, but what happens when you go to sell the land and, and so forth, is that this will seem like the end of the property and it'll cause problems down the line.
If you can see, this is the, the fence along Henry DuBois Road, right? There's the top of, of the shed, you see these trees here? My property line ends on the other side of these trees, so I think that's why they ended the fence right there, but more importantly, if I were to bring the fence here and go straight across my property line, there is the most massive, massive tree, I don't even know if it physically could be taken down, but it is right on the property line, so technically, I guess half of the tree is, belongs to the people behind me and half me, but I mean, it is the circumference of the tree, I'm, it's huge.
You, so you're trying to dodge...
I don't want to have to try to take the tree down, I like the tree, I'm sure my neighbors don't want me to take it down, and if I come in that two feet, then I, maybe I'm giving up a little property, but the tree will remain...
No, you can go around the tree.
I guess I could do a curve or something around it, but I just thought the easiest was to just go straight.
Can't you go, um, let the tree be, let the tree affect me part of the fence?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess I could, I just thought the easiest thing was to just bring it in.
The trees can continue to grow, I mean, ever so slowly, but the tree's going to continue to grow.
Right. And you might want to, um, talk to professional fence vendors and installers to give you a better idea of what's doable.
Two feet along, I mean, the, two feet could make a real visual difference. The fence isn't up yet, like, do you know what I mean? Given the size of the property, and it's, it's really a very pretty property, um, and especially if you really can sort of like, if you will, take advantage of this gorgeous tree instead of blocking it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I mean, that's neither here nor there, that doesn't help the situation, except that it, it could mean two more feet to move the shed back.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm concerned, if you're talking about that, um, you know, we are looking to see if the benefit can be achieved by some other method and if we, you can reduce the substantiality of the variance you're asking for.
Mm-hmm.
And that two feet in the back might mean that you could move the shed.
But the two feet is going to be, the two feet that we're talking about, well, never mind, I mean, the two feet, you're, when you're talking about setback, you're talking about how close this shed is to Henry DuBois Road over here, right? Or how close it is to my property line here? If I bring the fence over this way, I mean, the shed could be brought along that line that way if I took down some trees, but it's still equidistant to the fence that's along Henry DuBois, it's still just as close to Henry DuBois Road into my property line there.
Well, see, but what we're talking about is, all right, so, let me get these two lined up, so, all right, so this patio does not exist here. The portico does not exist.
Can I write on that?
Oh, sure.
Just to make it easy.
Where's the driveway?
Okay, um, the driveway is right here and the driveway comes along the side of the house, like that, and there's a portico, you know, like this, I guess.
The carport.
Carport.
Carport, yeah.
I don't, I'm going to go home and look up portico, I honestly don't...
Portico's a fine word, I get it.
Okay.
Much more elegant.
Carport is there.
Okay.
Um, so this red fence that you see in the pictures ends right there, the shed is right now, I'd say about here, there's some trees here.
Oh, it's odd-long, it's not square.
No.
So, it could go here theoretically.
Well, here is my air conditioning units, um, and whole bunches of trees.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can it go back here somewhere?
This is five feet, right here.
How wide is this?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is five feet between the edge of the patio and my property line over here. It's, it, it may look on Google Maps like a lot of space, but it's not.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I just was trying to get, you know, if you could have seen a satellite view, it might have helped.
Right.
Again, the fence is fourteen by twenty-five?
No, the shed is fourteen-deep by twenty-five long.
Yes, I meant shed. It's fourteen feet deep.
That's a big shed.
That is a big shed, that's...
That is like a room.
Yeah, it doesn't look like that from...
Wait, that is way more, way more than a hundred and forty-four square feet.
Yeah, why do you need to shed that big?
Of course it is.
I don't think so. Oh, I don't know.
Twelve times twelve is a hundred and forty-four.
That's way big.
That's way bigger than what you...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could, this could be student housing, this could be student housing.
Don't laugh, yes, it could be.
I'm, I'm looking at the picture and I can't imagine that being twenty-five feet long.
But the pic, but the...
But it's twice as long as it is wide.
That's my point. This whole representation is inaccurate.
Three hundred and fifty square feet in New York City, that's an apartment.
The reason, the reason I'm saying is, even if that door was seven feet long and you laid it on its side, I, I think you're right, we need more information, like, I, I think...
We need to know how many square feet that is.
I'm taking the fourteen by twenty-five from the, from this, and again, I don't know where this came from.
Right, and I, I think that's why we need to have more accurate information, because...
I was interpreting that as being fourteen feet going this way and twenty-five feet here.
Yeah, me too, that's what I drew.
And that's what you said.
But you said the shed had those dimensions.
Well, because I'm looking at this, I don't, again, I honestly have no idea where this came from.
I don't think this might exceed the, the permission of the size of sheds.
Yeah, if it was fourteen by twenty-five.
If it's fourteen by twenty-five, I mean, that is not a legal shed.
The other thing you need to just be aware of is that there are restrictions on, depending on where trees are located, there are restrictions on whether you can take them down.
Right.
And you would need to, if you were going to entertain that, you would need to talk to the shade commission, because I'm not clear, but I know that if it's within twenty feet of the street, they either can come down and be replaced or they can't be...
The building department can give her that information.
That's what I'm saying.
I think you need to measure the shed, I don't think it's fourteen by twenty-five.
Well, it's not the size of a city apartment, I know that.
But I don't think it's fourteen by twenty-five, that would be huge.
Yeah, this looks a lot smaller.
Do you have a bill from this guy that, like, says what he made for you?
Yeah. But the thing that I wanted to point out, Stacey, it, there is a shade tree commission, and just keep in mind that twenty feet from the road, the shade tree governs whether you can remove a tree.
Well, that's why Rich Travis was saying there's nowhere else to put the shed.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just wanted you to be aware.
Because of the size of my property and because too many trees would have to be taken down.
I just wanted you to be aware that there is that.
Okay.
But it is, wait, wait, but my understanding is it is possible to replace the trees, if you take trees down.
It looks like it's square.
Yeah, you can replace them, so you, it's not...
Yeah, maybe it's more of a square, I don't know.
I think we, I think we should consider just, um, asking for tabling this until more accurate information is provided.
But I'm, I would, I'm wondering whether, um, not as a hard, fast rule, but whether since we've had this much conversation about it, it wouldn't be helpful to Stacy for us to say what the concern, you know, what the concerns are or, so, because, because already there's been like confusion about information.
Well, that's what the concern is, is to give us accurate information.
But I would like to, to at least feel like we've done everything we can to make it clear to Stacy what it is she's going in, looking for and asking for, because she had the building inspector and we're still in this mess. So, and to the extent that we can...
And the building inspector hasn't said to us, this is the only place for it, under these conditions.
Right, but even if he did, but, I, I mean, we're asking her to go, quote, get us more information, and I'm really feeling like it would be really, it, it would be a good thing if we could be a little clearer or a little more directive or, or just so that Stacy has some guidelines about, you know, that she doesn't look out of here saying that if we can be more helpful than that, I would like to, is what I'm saying.
The question I have is what building inspector granted this permission, because if it was only to, if the shed was built, when?
About three weeks ago.
Well, the, the building inspector is the same person.
No, what I was saying is the people that owned the house before me, they applied for a permit to build a deck.
And they got it.
Yes, and then there was a different building inspector at that time, apparently, and he, he made the wrong decision about what was the front yard and what was the side yard, and I was going by the decision that the building inspector made.
Previously.
But, but...
Yeah, okay, well...
I think you should ask for a copy of that building permit that was issued.
Rich Travis has it in the folder downstairs, he showed it to me.
Okay, so, yeah, nonetheless... I'm making a note right now, I have it pulled out of the drawer. Okay, I would like to know how that building permit addressed section, what is it, two twelve nineteen?
And twenty.
That says, and twenty, that says that if you have a side yard facing a street, that front yard setbacks apply.
You mean for the, the permit for the deck?
If, if...
If that's what it was.
Yes.
Without, without saying anything, I mean, if it was a deck, might have been the type.
You're, you're addressing what on raising?
But that, yeah, but a deck is an attached structure, which you are making a good point.
Yeah.
I don't understand. Well, the deck was going to be, as you can see, in a different place than I put my patio and on the other side of the house from where the shed is, so, I'm confused.
No, we are too. If you're confused and you live there, you can imagine how we feel.
Well, but if you're saying, if, let me understand, so you're saying that a prior building inspector would have approved a shed?
No, 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 this...
A, a patio?
Deck.
A deck.
A deck on the opposite side from Henry DuBois.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't see why the setback issue would be an issue over here when this is another property line, whereas this is a street. It's section two twelve nineteen is saying that if a side yard abuts a street, then the front yard setbacks apply.
Okay.
This is another property, so the fact that this is a street has no relevance to the granting of that building permit, because it is for the opposite side of the property. Does that make sense?
Other setbacks would apply.
You would apply the side setback here because there is no street that makes a front yard setback substituted in.
Is that where the question of the front yard was? I thought it was a different, a question of whether it was Henry W. or Caroline Way.
It doesn't matter.
As far as the back property line?
As far as the property line, whether, I mean, in a sense, we can dispense with trying to figure out if the front is here or here, because when a side yard abuts a ma, a, a city or village street, then the setback requirement of the front yard applies. So, regardless of whether that's the side or the front, the twenty-five foot setback applies, end of story.
Yeah, I understood that, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
That's what Rich Travis told me.
What they approved over here has no bearing, because this does not abut a street.
I don't know, I, I don't know, I just know that when Rich Travis showed me the picture, he said that the prior building inspector determined that Henry DuBois Road was... he said that the prior building inspector determined that Henry DuBois Road was the side yard and Caroline Way was the front yard, I don't know why.
Okay.
I don't know, so, yes.
Can you look up two twelve twenty-eight, 'cause wait, this reads now?
Twenty-eight?
Uh, twenty-eight.
I have it right here, front yard setback, no, two, wait, wait, oh.
The, the word, the word says in letters, the side and rear setbacks of twelve feet, listed in section two twelve twenty-eight, three, would apply to the structure, since the height of the structure is under twelve feet. Twelve feet will be required to the side, east side of the property per section two twelve twenty-eight, which is, I think what it's saying is that there's a twelve-foot setback still, uh, needed, even though it's not on the street property.
Okay, it, what twelve twenty, twelve, twelve, two twelve twenty says is when an accessory structure is attached to the principal building, it shall comply in all respects with the requirement of this chapter applicable to principal buildings. A deals with attached accessory buildings, and A three says, no accessory building shall be located closer to the side and rear lot lines than twelve feet, or a distance equivalent to the height of the accessory building, whichever is greater.
Wait, wait, Katie, that's detached accessory building.
Yeah, that's what she's saying.
And that's what, that's what we're talking about.
Right, oh, wait, you said attached.
No, this is detached, so let's see.
How tall is the shed?
Well, the, the shed is under twelve feet, is what the, uh, is what Richard said. So it would be the default twelve feet, whichever is greater, twelve feet or the height of the structure. So I think, and, please help me know if I'm wrong, I think what that's saying is that even on the other property lines, the ones across from Henry DuBois, it's still going to be, you need twelve feet clearance.
We need twelve feet clearance anywhere.
I believe so, does that sound about right to everyone? I mean, it would be great to have, you know, Richard really waiting on us to give more detail.
Yeah.
If you please, it's the board, I can always ask Mr. Travis to be present for next meeting.
Mm-hmm. But I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want that meeting to take place unless we had something accurate on paper. I would like to see something accurate on paper, and I would also urge you to try and figure out a way of, you know, making the variance you request as minimal as possible. If there's some way of relocating that shed, so that, you know, use all the space you have with the fence, and if you attach it to the building, I guess you get a little more leeway, or? I'm wondering if attach is, uh, requires construction, moving it up to the building might leave it still. And detached, okay, yeah, yeah, and we don't make this.
Right, again, maybe overstepping, but if, I know that you said about the air conditioning stuff, if the carport came forward more, would you then have room to put the shed?
The carport can't be moved, it's an integral part of the house. I was just trying to find the emails on here that Rich Travis sent me.
I think measurements are absolutely essential.
You think what?
Measurements.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Because I don't, I think, no matter what you may have been told was built, I don't think your shed looks like it's that big.
Well, we, we need, we need the numbers, we need a representation.
Yeah.
That I had, which Ellen, I believe you started. If Stacy, you put your fence on your property line, right on the line, would that give you the, the extra two feet, would that get you what you need to move it over?
No, because it's, the fence would be going lengthwise, so I could move the shed down along the fence, but it would still be the same distance from Henry DuBois in my property line as it is now, it would just be further back, you know, more in, like, in the corner, and again, there's all trees there.
Is it possible that there is fourteen feet between the edge of your property line on Henry DuBois and the start of the shed? Is it possible that that fourteen feet represents the distance from, I'm assuming Henry DuBois is like here?
Yeah, you can see the pavement a little bit, okay?
So is it possible that from here over to the start of the shed is fourteen feet?
It, it's possible, again, I didn't, I don't know where this came from, I didn't write those numbers on there.
In other words, you're saying that the property outside the fence, between the fence and Henry W., is really her property, and if it's her property, then does it count?
Well, of course it counts.
No, 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 I mean, that, that's.
But that's a good question, but that does look.
Right. This isn't, this isn't my property.
And would that make the fence illegal?
This isn't your property, it's right of way?
Wait, 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 what do you mean, would that make the fence illegal?
Is it too close to the house? Where, do you know where your property line begins here?
To Joe Bergen.
Well, I know my property line is right in line with that red fence, because there's a marker, like, right, you can, you can see it actually, you can see a little pink ribbon right there, just on the other side of those trees, and I think they didn't continue the fence that two more feet, because they didn't wanna take down the trees.
Did she buy this from Joe Bergen?
No, he lives.
He li, yeah, he lives in the old house. Okay, this, 'cause, I mean, here's my thought, is that if there's actually fourteen feet between the property line and the shed, then that sort of meets this twelve-feet distance. That's why I was asking, is that representation of the shed?
Maybe that was the shed, I don't know who drew that little box there.
But that's what we need to have on paper to start.
Can I ask you a question? Because, I mean, my understanding is that my, this fence is my property line, do I auto, I mean, is that automatically? I don't own this property, the town owns it, I guess.
I think that is something you can get answered when you go to the building department, and ask them to look in the file and see what's available.
Well, she can look at her deed too, because they may have put this fence further back than the property line for, for real.
Yeah, we, we need accurate measurements before we can really talk about this.
Do you know Floyd Niffen?
Yeah, he built my house.
Yeah. Why don't you?
I mean, I don't know him, I, he didn't build a house for me, but I, I mean, I don't know him personally, but I know that he's the person that built my house.
Floyd is a very good, in my opinion, a very good builder, he built those houses. He was on the planning board, I would think he could give you some guidance.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah.
So I, I move to, uh, table this issue until we have information that can help us.
All right, what about the fence? We're tabling that too, and I, and what do I need, what information do I need to bring back about the fence?
Well, I think that you need to talk to the building inspector about it, and he needs to, um.
Make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation in writing, and he needs to make sure that the case that is shown in the file is represented to us, or he needs to come here to a meeting with the file to chat with us. But this kind of thing can't move the issue forward at all. Do we have a second? Discussion? Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
There's a motion.
Would you repeat your motion?
I, I move that we table this issue, both issues, until such time as we have accurate representations of the situation with distances and accurate plot information.
Moving to table is not debatable, all in favor, say a like?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, matter is tabled, you know what information we're asking for.
Do you know, do you know what we're asking for?
Um, I, I think so.
Okay, we want.
I need to get an architect to do an architectural drawing of the property and all the structures on the property, is what I'm guessing.
See, see what's in the file.
Yes.
See what they.
And see what Floyd Niffen can help you with.
He may very well have a plan.
I actually, if your permission is, I will probably call Floyd morning and inform him about what he has to do.
Sure. Now, I don't, I mean, I don't think we're asking for an architectural drawing, you may have a site plan that sufficiently, you know, that's part of your deed, that's part of your title insurance, that sufficiently shows the property line, which would definitively answer the question about whether the fence on Henry DuBois is on your property line, for example, right? And some of the things, um, the, the question really, it seems to me, is leaving the fence out of it completely, whether it's in two feet or not in two feet, whether it's eight feet, or leaving the fence out completely, the question is, if you want a shed, it would seem to me, the first thing you need to do is resolve how you can get that shed situated, because any decision you make about that may have some bearing on the fence. You might need the two feet that you were planning, you know, to come in from, for example, so don't, if you move forward with the fence, and you do the fence, you're just adding more constraints, you're possibly adding more constraints on the situation. So if Floyd, you know, or your, or your, your mortgage, or whatever, has, that would be a valid plan, um, and it would have the house on it if it's for your mortgage.
I believe that the planning board would have had a subdivision map.
Yeah.
This should be in the file, Stacy.
Would that show the position of the house?
Down the building department would show exactly the measurements of your property, which show where the property lines are.
It will show the patio and the shed.
Just ask the building inspector to pull the file, because, what was that development called? Okay, but Floyd was the builder, and he built all of those houses, and that was a subdivision that he had to have approval from the planning board, that's why I suggested recalling him.
I think that's, Floyd is a great resource, I think Floyd.
He really, I think if anybody can just look at this, and he knows the planning board's rules, and he built the houses, and he could just look at it and say, you can go right there, don't put the fence up, it can, or it can, you know, I mean, I think, and he's a really nice person, so.
Yeah.
Either way.
Thank you.
And also, if, um, if you can just, just do a measurement of the shed, so we can make sure we have that as well.
Okay.
And I may need to have Mr. Travis for that email that he sent to you, to me, so I can start looking for.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Do you have the board's?
I do, not on you, but yes, I have the, I'm there, I'm looking at the application, so I'll, thank you, Katie, thank you.
Is there any other questions?
The two, the question for the minutes, and the, uh, approval of the $100 application fee for, um, Mr. Henry.
And then if you go out of there, and I just need to exit up on the court decision of one point seven.
So are we doing the minutes, Katie, so I?
Okay, I have questions too. When you, when you folks do the minutes, the, the only things you take are the actual motions.
Motion and action, that's all we do.
Okay, that, then I understand why my issue was not put in the minutes, because I didn't make it as a motion, and that was, Carl was going to check to find out why the landscaping hadn't been done on Mannheim, and did you?
Yeah.
And what did?
Weather, they were waiting.
For winter?
For winter.
I, I think for spring.
Way of spring, yeah.
Which is what I thought he said when he was here.
My, my, I think our problem with this is that we did not specify a time.
A time.
Yeah.
A deadline, yeah.
No, you didn't specify a deadline, so I think he had the right to assume.
I think that we should, we should take some lesson from that, that when we are dealing with landscaping, uh, we need to consider whether or not we wanna put a time on it.
Yes, because he could've done it up until about a day ago.
Right, well, I don't remember what, what plans he was planning to use, but were they, were they good for winter? I mean, like, would they actually?
They wouldn't have wintered well.
Yeah.
He did, I, I, 'cause I saw it, he did, he did state that he had a variety of things that, that had different seasonal planting on them.
Oh, so he could've started the, the ones for the season?
No, generally you can plant up until the ground freezes, and fall is the best planting time for trees and shrubs.
Oh, okay.
I have another question about the minutes, yeah? On where it was the, on the front, Mr. Rockwell moved to approve the fence that's either six feet high, or that, and it says, or that is higher than six feet, any additional amount. I think I, it would make more sense to me, because if he said it is, and I'm wondering if it was just a pay for having it.
And we, do we need to vote on the return of that?
You need to recommend, it has to be recommended to the village board, so that they can approve it correctly, or they can approve it.
Any kind of motion to do that?
I don't know what we're doing, what is the issue?
The issue is that we had a deposit of $200, which no longer applies, and.
From?
Mr. Henry on, uh.
Yuguenot Street.
What about Yuguenot?
And, and it doesn't apply because he's?
Withdrew his application, so we need to approve the return of the deposit.
Re-remending to the village board it be repaid. Oh, gosh.
You gotta, you understand.
I'm gonna have to stay from that one.
Do I give a motion to approve the return of that $200?
Well, do we have any legal reason not to?
It, it was placed on our agenda as something that we had to deal with, so we will deal with it.
I move that we return the, that we approve the return.
We recommend.
I recommend.
That we recommend the return of the money to the Board of Trustees, is that right?
No, 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 Mr. Henry, you're recommending that the escrow or the deposit be returned to the applicant.
Right, okay.
And that is a recommendation to the village board to answer.
That's what I was trying to say, but Sally said it much better.
Right, Katie?
Yes.
And Katie writes it even better.
So I move that.
Okay. I will, I will give a second on that motion.
Wait, are you all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? So, so ordered.
Okay, can I, I do have one other question about the issue before us.
Quiet.
That what came up, the question I asked about if Caroline Way is a private road, does that matter as a point of general information, would it not be good for us to know that?
Yeah.
I, I can't conceive that it is not within the purview of, of the village.
Right, oh, yeah.
You need to treat it as though it were not a public road, as though it were not private road.
Even though it wasn't built by the village, it's still within the village.
And subject to.
And subject to whatever our, our coaches.
I'd imagine that you were also looking out for the best interest of the other residents in that on Caroline Way, so even though they're there as well, it would still, it's just in full of the same, it would still act as if it's in the village.
Okay, so wait, we haven't voted on the minutes yet, right?
No.
Okay, so I, I, I don't know whether this is something we can do. We had much discussion, it wasn't a, a fuzzy, we had much discussion about precedent and not setting precedent, and really being clear that one of the reasons we were willing to, uh, go with the eight feet was because of the slope of the property, and I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, the more explicit we are about the ruling that we made, the easier it is to not then feel forced to grant yet another variance, and we had extended conversation about that, and we did in fact say, I can't tell you exact words, we did in fact say that the slope of the land was such, and that that played a part in our decision. So I don't know whether we want, if there's a way to have the minutes reflect that, if we want the minutes to reflect that, because we're talking about another eight-foot fence.
Yeah.
Okay, I would be happy to ask Alberta, we can amend the minutes, but I can tell you for absolute certainty that every motion is very accurate. We can amend the minutes to add in a part of the narrative to show the net, the intention, and represent it to the board at the next minute, the next meeting, if that's what you'd like. Is that, do people, how do people feel about that?
That's fine, but it brings up a question, how is the information of the decision here transmitted to the applicant for a variance? Is, is.
Rebecca, Rebecca, pardon me, I'm so sorry. Victoria and I spoke this week, actually last week, I'm sorry, um, in the future. In the future, any variance that you issue will have a resolution that is very specific. This particular one, because the resolution wasn't handled at the meeting, she will be drafting a formal letter. The owner of the property will not be broken down until spring at this point anyhow. He just wants to make sure that he has the proper paperwork at that time. And so Victoria will draft a letter that outlines the will of the board in granting that variance.
And she will get that information strictly from the minutes?
I don't.
I think we need to see what is going to the applicant.
Oh, certainly.
We've never, we've never seen anything that goes to the applicant.
Well, your resolutions, the actual resolution should be copied to the file.
I've never seen anything.
That, Katie, that.
In the future, any resolution presented, prepared by Victoria or basically she's going to give us a form resolution will actually appear in the minutes. Because a resolution should appear in the minutes. And I don't know why in previous times it hasn't, but that will be the precedent for the future.
So we will have a form to fill out when our decision is made at the meeting?
Yes, and that form and that resolution will then appear in the minutes that it is, you'll see at the very next meeting.
And that goes to file.
And also part of the permanent record, the permanent, wait, minute book and also in the file.
Okay, it's very important, I think. If one thing to be in the minutes, I think it must be in the file, yes.
And the file is, the file in the building inspector's office and that is the only file that will exist on anything?
Right.
Okay, yeah, the quality of those files is of concern to me.
We have a notebook that exists that you've seen Deputy Thirshaw with at meetings that is just for informational purposes only. But it was determined that the file is the building department file and needs to be completely perfect at all times. And actually, we're looking for a grant from the state to back up that entire collection of files digitally next year.
Why, why did this applicant have to fill out this appendix, the short environment?
I have no idea.
That would happen in the building department. I don't have an answer.
Why?
I was surprised when I saw.
And it's not in the fence. It's not in the fence. So would it be reasonable for us to ask for a working session with the building inspector to clarify what should be part of an application, what?
I think we need to, and I think we need to change our forms as well. Because the forms are not doing us any favors.
Yeah, we went through that. I gave all that information to the former.
Planner.
Planner. And I don't know what happened to all the documentation that we had put together.
By downstairs in one of the files.
It's downstairs, so if we could get that and, you know, at this point, what else do I have to do over the holidays? I would be happy to word process some forms if I could get whatever it was I turned over.
How happy will you be? That would be wonderful if they're findable.
I thought you were amending the minutes.
Yeah, I think we really need to change the forms.
Specify.
Okay.
Do it by a format. Do it in the motion and in the minutes.
Okay, I move that the minutes from the November 12th meeting are modified to show, to change the word is to if.
Okay.
To have language in it that states our intentions in granting the variance, the eight-foot fence variance, and there's one other thing. There was one other thing.
Grant the variance.
Oh, and that, and that, huh? And that, that, that our attorney is drafting a resolution, which we will see? No, that's not part of it?
You're just amending the minutes to reflect what you asked and everybody agreed on, and that is that the resolution to grant the variance specify very clearly your reason.
That's it, I'm really happy to add that narrative.
But I, am I moving that?
You're moving.
I've moved that, so we need a second, Mr. Checkperson.
Do I need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
I am abstaining because I was not at the meeting. I am abstaining because I was not at the meeting.
Okay.
So I just don't want to be on record as having approved them without having any basis for which to make that.
You're not approving them, you're just approving the motion to have them amended to show an error.
Change, next.
The concept that Katie just told you about that Victoria is going to introduce will take care of it from now on.
Right, it's a working solution for the, for the future. We will see what we can do about finding any prior notes about forms. And certainly Alberta would be happy to amend forms if we could find the favorable.
Oh, she's good at amending forms. She likes to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind doing it. I mean, we're going beyond amending forms. We're putting up new ones.
Whatever, it's the purview of the board. We're happy to.
Yeah.
You never said, is the baby a boy or a girl?
It's a boy. It's a boy. I've got the picture.
So how many boys now?
Four boys and one tough girl.
Now, for the child.
Are we closing the meeting?
Carl, do we have other things to do? Were you going to? Okay, I move the, we adjourn the meeting?
All in favor, perfecto, say a aye.
Adjournment?
And Merry Christmas.
I was just asking.